This meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications, cable TV, Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Scott Gray. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and if you come up to address the Planning Commission, please sign your name on the sheet so we can know who you are for the minutes. Okay. So, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Story?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Chairperson Newman?
Here. Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions and deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, no additions or deletions. We do have a request for a continuance for item 5A.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to continue, and then we're going to have some discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll move to continue.
I'll second it. My question is, I was wondering about the sidewalk deferral because it looks like this property abuts the sidewalk that then has the crosswalk with the signals on it, and so I would just like Public Works' input about whether they think it would be more appropriate to put the sidewalk in now or to defer it.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chair, I had a question as well. The letter that we received in our packet from the neighbors on Woolsey Court, they mentioned that the fence that's currently there is a slat fence with gaps in it. I was wondering if that is accurate?
So, I had pictures this evening for you, but there's slight gaps in it from the boards over time weathering, but it would not be accurate to say that they have a lot of spacing in between other than from weathering. So, I'll bring, I'll make sure in the next packet that there's evidence of that for the fence.
All right.
And I think you can show that that fence was constructed when that subdivision was put in there, and that's actually their fence, not the applicant's.
See, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here. Do we have a date we want to continue to or discontinue it?
July 20th.
Okay, July 20th. That's the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, now, next item is public comments. Anyone wish to address the Planning Commission on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one, any commissioners?
I have, just real quick, because I'm thinking I may not be here towards the end, maybe I will, so I'll comment now. Just that Traffic and Parking Commission has approved and been working on, and thanks to our man of the year, Steve diligently pushing Park Mobile, they've kind of started a, they're calling a "soft" opening for employee parking program. So, we're going to start off with Zeldas and Paradise, so they'll pay $6.50 a month. It's a monthly parking program to park in the lower parking lot, and we'll see where it goes from there, but it's about two years in the making, so we're finally getting somewhere with it.
Yes.
If I may, I wonder, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to make a report as the Planning Commissioner representative to the Art and Cultural Commission. The Art and Cultural Commission has appointed a subcommittee, which includes myself, to look at the Public Art Fund and hopefully provide some clarifications and some updates to that particular ordinance. We're having our first meeting this Saturday. It's actually Councilmember Termini, Dennis Norton, and myself that are on that subcommittee. So, I just wanted to report that to the commissioners.
Thank you. Any other commission comments? If not, any staff comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did want to announce that today we started distributing the Public Review Draft zoning code update, so I do want to acknowledge Katie for all her hard work to get that document out. So, it'll be out for 60 days, and during that time, we'll collect comments and then prepare responses and review the draft before we initiate adoption hearings with you probably in September.
The end is in sight.
Hopefully.
Okay. Next item is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 6, 2017. Do we have any additions, corrections?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Takes us to the consent calendar, and we're going to have to do this in some parts, but first let's look at what we have. We have three items on the consent calendar. 210 Esplanade, a ceiling permit for wall sign and projecting sign for the Capitola Hotel. Then we have 203 and 205 Sacramento Avenue, major revocable encroachment permit for a 42-inch fence and gate in the public right-of-way along Sacramento Avenue. And then we have 212 Monterey Avenue, design permit application for an exterior remodel in addition of 304 square feet to an existing two-story multifamily residential building with a variance request to hike located in the Central Village zoning district. Any commissioners?
Chairperson Newman, I just want to clarify, item C, 212 Monterey, all we're voting on in consent is to continue to July 20th?
Correct.
Oh, request for continuance, thank you. Just a request for a continuance. So, any of the commissioners wish to pull any of these items from consent?
Well, I think myself and Commissioner Story need to pull ourselves to recuse ourselves because of proximity to the property, 203 and 205 Sacramento.
Okay, that's another issue, but...
That's correct, yes.
Anyone in the audience want to remove any of these items from the consent calendar for a regular hearing? Seeing no one, okay. The next issue is that we have recusals on Sacramento Avenue?
Correct.
So, first let's take items A and C. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
A and C and?
D.
D? Oh, D is there. That's to continue to July 21 also.
20th.
20th.
Actually, the 20th. What's the typo?
Oh. Okay. I'm getting a lot of corrections here.
That's why you have these people...
Yeah, so I have all the commissioners here to help me.
So, I think Commissioner Westman, did you just move approval of A, C, and D?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll take item B separately, and we're going to have Commissioner Story two recusals. Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Story recuse, so the three commissioners remaining, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item B on the consent calendar.
And I'll second that motion with a comment that we did receive a letter and have considered that.
Considered that letter, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. So, that takes us to the public hearings, and the first public hearing is 2205 Warfrode, which we have continued now. So, that takes us to item 5B, which is 312 Park Avenue, application number 17-027, design permit to demolish an existing residence and to construct a new two-story residence with an attached secondary dwelling unit in the R1 zoning district. Staff report, please.
Excuse me, Chairperson, I need to recuse myself also due to proximity for this one.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners.
Are you leaving for the evening?
You know, mine, I did my report update, so...
Yeah, there's really nothing else here.
It's great seeing you folks.
Yeah, I wouldn't...
Thanks for coming to you, Dave.
Didn't earn your paycheck here. Yeah. Now, staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you use an application for a design permit to construct a new two-story residence with an attached secondary dwelling unit located in the R1 single-family residential zoning district. The subject property is located along the north side of Park Avenue. The existing structure and property have not been maintained in the past and have created safety concerns. In 2015, the building department condemned the property and issued a notice to abate all substantial conditions. Today, the building is boarded up so that no one may enter the structure. Additionally, the front, side, and rear yards of the property were extremely overgrown with So, here is an aerial of the property showing this overgrown vegetation. The property was sold in 2016. The new owners received a demolition permit and tree removal permit to remove 19 cypress trees from throughout the property. They are highlighted in these Xs. So, today, the existing residence has not been demolished, but as you can see, these 19 cypress trees have already been removed. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing dilapidated residence and construct a new two-story home and secondary dwelling unit. The garage is shown in blue, the secondary dwelling unit shown in green. Each of these would be attached to the front of the proposed residence and would occupy a majority of the front facade. Here are the proposed front and side elevations. The building would use a mix of stucco, stone veneer, and shingle siding. The main residence and secondary dwelling unit each have their own front doors, highlighted in blue, which both face the front yard. The proposed 3,004-square-foot residence and secondary dwelling unit required to have four onsite parking spaces, which they comply with. The applicant's proposing an 18-foot-wide driveway approach at the front property line, which widens to 21 feet at the proposed curb edge. The driveway also widens to 41 feet along the front of the home with the incorporation of the turnaround area. Pursuant to code, driveway width for residential uses shall not exceed 20 feet unless an exception is granted by the Planning Commission due to unusual lot configuration, landscaping, or site design considerations. So, the applicant believes that the code section was meant to limit the width of the driveway approach and should not include the turnaround area. The applicant pointed out that most properties on Park Avenue have driveways which exceed the 20-foot rule. This slide shows properties along this specific block of Park Avenue which have driveways larger than 20 feet. Here are two additional properties. These are directly west of 312 Park Avenue. As you can see, their driveways occupy just about the entire property. The applicant contests that a turnaround area is a necessary safety measure so that cars do not back out onto Park Avenue. Here you can see the existing conditions of Park Ave. The street is fairly busy thoroughfare with residences to the north and on-street parking to the south. So, from this picture, residences on the left, on-street parking to the right. The applicant also argues that the turnaround area is the only option to fit the third uncovered space and that the turnaround area will be screened from Park Avenue with a three-foot-high landscape berm. Based on the reasons listed above, the Planning Commission may grant an exception to the 20-foot requirement to allow the turnaround area. The turnaround area would use permeable pavers, highlighted in gray, which would differentiate the area from the concrete driveway. Additionally, the view of the property from Park Avenue would not appear to be all parking and driveway area. The three-foot-tall landscaping berm, highlighted in green, would occupy over half of the front of the property and would screen the turnaround area from public view while on Park Avenue. A cross-section of the landscape berm can be seen to the right. Staff recommends allowing the turnaround area but restricting the driveway approach to the maxed-on 20-foot width. The proposed plans show the driveway widening from 18 to 21 feet at the proposed curb edge. Staff has added a condition of approval requiring the plans be revised at time of building permits middle to show the driveway approach complying with that 20-foot rule. So, lastly, here's the proposed landscape plan. The applicant has preserved two mature cypress trees along the rear of the property and is proposing to plant two multitrunk arbutus trees within the landscape berm on the front of the property. In addition, the applicant's proposing to plant several different types of shrubs, vines, and perennials throughout the perimeter of the property. The applicant has also worked with the Public Works Department to ensure that the proposed landscape berm and driveway approach will conform to the city's Park Avenue sidewalk improvement plan. So, therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve both the design permit and coastal development permit for a new two-story residence and attached secondary dwelling unit at 312 Park Avenue. Available, if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff? Is there...
I only have one question, and I forgot to ask this earlier, but because of the ADU request, the square footage is allowed to be increased, what kind of parking would be required without that increase in square footage? Would it be three or four spaces?
Well, it'd depend, you know, if they built out the maximum floor area ratio, since parking is based on square footage, I'd have to do the calculation real quickly.
Sorry, I didn't ask you that one.
Without the ADU, it looks like they'd still be required to have four parking spaces.
Thank you.
I had a question. I should know this, but I forgot. Is there, is there on-street parking in front of this house?
No.
Is there? When we get to discussion, I think that has something to do with the driveway approach. So, we'll open the public hearing, and first the applicant or the applicant's representative. I see Mr. Norton in the wings.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Honorable Planning Commission, for doing this tonight. I'm Dennis Norton. I also have the owner, Arthur Lynn, in the audience, too, if you have any questions of him. This section of the street, all the way down, has a plan line developed for it. So, what we'll see there is we'll see a sidewalk and curb and gutter as this thing is improved. This will be the first house that's making those improvements, but as it goes along, it'll go all the way down to the school entrance side road there, I'm not sure what the name of that is, but we'll be able to go on the corner all the way down. So, what you're really doing is you're narrowing down the front of the lot. Many of the houses, almost all of them in this section of the street, have direct backups of the whole length of the property. What we're doing is, is we're doing design, we need to put four parking spots in there, and if it wasn't for the ADU, we could easily fit adult two-car garage. It just doesn't work to put an ADU. In this case, an ADU works best in the front of the house, it seemed like a normal ordinance. And if I'm not mistaken, that the ADU itself is, by law, is actually a requirement of the state of California that it doesn't require a planning review for this. This is, it's only really for, you know, it's part of the structure, and I can understand design review would be important, but that's not a requirement of a planning process to have ADU. So, we decided an ADU works well there. There's a lot of demand in our community for it. The major hang-up right now is just getting a water permit for that because it needs a separate water. But the street improvements will be started and be placed in. We pulled, we watch other cars to try and get in out of there and talk to the neighbors, and well, we're backing up, it's real tough because the traffic itself backs up in that area. So, we felt that even though that one space would be maybe possibly a fourth car, it would really help the lot to have a turnaround area. Interpretation of the driveway width, to me, means at the entrance, because there's many, if you go to Cliffwood Heights, there's every, 50% of the houses turn to the right, which makes the driveway 40 feet wide as it gets to the garage. So, that ruling about 20 feet wide really only applies, I think, to the driveway entrance itself, and we're at 18 feet. And the side turnout is actually 12 feet wide, so there's nothing wider than the 20 feet except for the, except for the front driveway. The design of the house, I think fits really well in that neighborhood. It's a lot that's long overdue of getting some improvements on it, and we're providing an ADU to the community, we're getting rid of an older house and giving it a good design and trying to make the traffic situation the best we can with a single lot. The other option would have been to do a, to do a U-shaped driveway, and that would have taken all of the landscape out the front. So, Mike, our known who designed us, we, not only do we do a front yard design for you, we did a rear yard design for you. And we're replacing the trees as requested by staff, and we meet all the requirements set back and all the standards of that zoning. Thank you for your time.
Any questions of the applicant's representative?
If I may, Dennis, thank you for that presentation, and also for the applicant for really improving what has been an eyesore in our community for a long time. I think the only question that I had, Dennis, is I was quite sure of the necessity for the 21 feet at the end of the sidewalk as what was proposed by staff, that that be narrowed to 20 feet.
Well, we could do that. We can bring it down, we can bring it to 20 feet. What it is, is driveways require a flare, so you can make a left and right turnout of it, so that's why they're flared like that, but we were willing to bring it to any width that staff feels is...
Okay, the 20 feet will work for...
It would work, yes.
...the design. Great, thank you. That's all my only question.
I have a question. The stone that's going to be on the front of the building, did we get any kind of sample or color board or anything about what we're talking about? And the question I really have for you as the designer, and this is not a make-or-break issue, this is, the stone sort of wraps around the two sides of the houses, and I wondered if you really felt that was the best way of doing it? You know, it's just a personal thing. I often find that, you know, the stone sort of going around and then stopping, and stucco starting looks like something wasn't finished. I wondered if it would be more appropriate to have the stone sort of stop just on the corner there and then have the walls be stucco, not part stone and stucco. And as I said, it's not a make-or-break issue, it's just...
You know, as it sho, it could, it could end right at the corner of the building on the, on the east side. The west side, I think it wraps into the entry a little bit, so it has to go through that area. But I'm open to that suggestion, so...
Yeah, I would just like when you do your plans and you, you know, consider it finally, that you look hard at whether or not it's better to have the stone simply be on the front and then have the sidewalls be stucco rather than half and half.
No problem, we will do it.
Thank you.
And here is...
Thank you.
So, it's going to be like a river rock, kind of?
It is, it's going to be a river rock, very craftsman-looking.
Anyone else in the public like to address this item? Yes?
My name is Tony here, and I live next door to the property that's being...
Okay, and then there's a little sign-in sheet there if you get a chance.
Oh, great. I live next door at 314, and there is a bit of a property line difference, and the fence is going to be moved. Now, I wasn't aware of this when I purchased the property a few years ago, but what they're proposing is just sort of turning the fence, so I'll lose a little bit on the front, or I'll gain a little on the front, and I'll lose a little on the back. And I have no problem with any of this, but I want to make sure of two things. One, that it doesn't get too close to my house where I can't bring things in and out of the side of the property, and two, that somebody actually verifies that when they put the fence in, that it's in the proper location. Is there, I don't know how to...
I think the staff can verify that the building department will require some sort of survey of the property...
I think they did, right?
...before they start construction, so that survey should be able to verify where the property lines are, and then it would seem like the neighbor and the applicant could work out exactly where the fence goes in relation to that property line. I mean, we don't...
Yeah, that's kind of a private matter, as long as they have their lot surveyed and build within the setbacks that are permitted by law.
Okay, but is there some inspector that comes out to look at this when they build it?
Well, the building department will be inspecting.
Okay.
And Mr. Norton will probably discuss that with you.
Yeah, we did have the property surveyed, the property is surveyed, and I showed this gentleman the survey, and so I understand his concern. What we would do is actually, at the time that you set your forms for your foundation, you're required to have the building department come out and check that. He has to know where that property line is, so we would be running a string up that's okay by the building inspector before we, before it. So, we would have, we have it marked at both ends, and we'll make sure that that fence goes right on that line there, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And other than the parking, let's break it up this way, other than the parking issue, is there any thing anyone wants to bring up or discuss?
I don't have any issue with the house itself. I made my comment, the one little design comment I had.
Right, and I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the project with the change to the front driveway as recommended by staff, in essence, I think, to pass the staff recommendation.
Well, I'd like to discuss that parking issue a little bit, then if we move on to that, and then we can just hold your motion for a little bit here. Let me, first of all, this is an extremely problematic parking layout, but I'm not sure they have any choice here. I mean, all, they're really all tandem. I mean, one space is blocked by two spaces, in fact, two of the spaces are blocked by two spaces.
Right.
So, it's kind of like a parking in a restaurant in San Francisco, you know, where cars leap over each other. How they ever get where they are, nobody knows. That's, unfortunately, that's what we have here. But first of all, as to the turnaround parking space, I don't see that that's a driveway, that's a parking space. So, I mean, I don't even think that the 20-foot driveway requirement applies to that at all, in my opinion, so...
I agree.
That one's not, that's a non-issue in my view. The other one, first of all, I scaled the flare out, and I came to 22 and 1/2 feet, but I might not be that good at, I don't do it as much as you do. So, there is no dimension on the plans there.
I used to scale.
So, you have to, have to create your own dimension. But in any event, first of all, the 20-foot approach width, I read the ordinance, and it didn't seem to me that it was clear that it applied, whether it applied to the property line or the curb, which is, at the property line here, it's only 18 feet. But getting more to the purpose of it, if there's no on-street parking there, then the safety benefit of having, you know, more room to turn into the driveway, to me, way outweighs just kind of slavish adherence to a 20-foot width there, which accomplishes nothing. I mean, if we were parking on the street, I can see where you have to limit how much of a break in the potential on-street parking there is, or people would have great big driveways and there'd be no parking then. But so, I don't, I don't really think it's necessary to modify this parking plan as difficult as it is. I mean, I don't think we should make it any more difficult by narrowing the approach. I guess that's, that's what I have to say.
So...
No, go ahead, please.
I, for me, you know, I understand that on each one of these projects, we want to, you know, tweak the rules a bit so it works more for that project than the other. I mean, that we've had other projects come in where people have wanted wider driveways than 20 feet, and we've said, no, you know, you need to stick with the 20 feet. And, you know, it seems like if the applicant doesn't really feel that going to the 20 feet is going to be a burden for them...
Well, I, what I understood him to be saying is, you know, if we have to make, narrow it to 20 feet, we'll do it in order to build the project, but they obviously designed it so it would be, it would have the flare, and, I mean, I don't see where the ordinance says the 20 feet is measured at the curb as opposed to the property line. See, it's 18 feet at the property line, and it goes out to 22 and 1/2 at the curb.
We'd... You do have a ballot.
I don't know. Maybe we're just beating bad horse here on.
I would like to jump in on the whole one-foot thing because, and there's three comments I'd like to make about the plan. We have in the past looked at, you know, parking requirements and said, no, you can't park across the front of your house. But what I think this design has done is take into consideration the location that it's at, the safety requirements, the sidewalk and everything else. And I think, I agree with... He just came up with the technicality, but I agree wholeheartedly that having an approach on this street, getting in and out of that driveway, is far more important than measuring a 20-foot. And I think there's always going to be common sense considerations for, you know, holding to the letter of the code versus the intent of the code, and I think this meets the intent in more ways than, you know, the average design would do. So I have no... I would have no problem leaving it at the way that it's designed. And based on his technicality, that's not breaking the code. That's not granting an exception because the code doesn't say that it has to be 20 feet at the property line.
Can I ask for clarification? Because in the staff report, it says that the code says the approach can exceed 20 feet. So, but... So is it the approach or is it the actual property line? And I wanted to, I mean, and I don't think we need to get hung up on this. I think it's a minor issue, okay? But I think I share Susan's concern about, you know, whenever you grant a variance, I think there has to be a compelling reason why we would do that, okay? And the applicant has indicated that they could meet the 20-foot standard. But the other, I mean, in terms of safety, that approach crosses a sidewalk. And to me, having cars swing out wider as they come and now they're going to be going forward because of the turnaround creates a more dangerous situation for people on the sidewalk because they could get, you know, cut off or clipped, or... And so I assume that that's part of the rationale here of why there are limits on the width. So that's another thought. But as I... I don't think I'm going to get hung up on your point, Ed, and I'm happy to accept either approach, but...
If I may, I can add some other facts to make this a little more confusing. So within the zoning code, there's a 20-foot width max for driveway width. Within Chapter 12.32 for driveway width, this is more of a public works standard, it does clarify that no driveway shall exceed in width 40% of the width of a lot at the street line. So this would be at the street line, and 40% of a 50-foot-wide lot is 20 feet. So if we went by the public works standard, it would also be 20 feet at the street line.
Okay, because we have such a light agenda, this is breaking my cardinal rule of closing the public hearing. Okay, go ahead.
What happens is the reason they have these flares, particularly today, is, remember, that has to be an ADA sidewalk, right? So what happens is the sidewalks come along, you have... If the driveway approach is tilted probably eight inches, six inches from the property line, tilts out. So what you have to do is you have to flare it somewhere because you have to be able to have the ADA... They can't have a ledge on the sidewalk, they have to flare down into it. So that's why we drive there. It doesn't necessarily mean the driveway's any wider than 20 feet. It just happens that every driveway approach has a flare to it to allow for a sidewalk, to allow for ADA handicap. That's...
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
And it looks like we're going to reopen the public hearing here today. Okay, come on.
I apologize for not having this question before, but during...
Well, give us your name, please.
...you referred to me, and I'll put my name down here.
And tell us your name.
I live at 310 Park, next door.
What is your name?
Colleen Stobie. And my question revolves around the safety of coming and going, and the berm in particular. I'm wondering, it was mentioned that there's three-foot berm that separates or will separate that turnaround area, and I am wondering to what extent there will be landscaping that would extend out. And the reason being, we generally back up out of our driveway, and we look up the street, and anything overhanging now obscures our view. And I'm just believing that it will be low, and the landscaping would be such that it would not be in our view, but that would be a hazard, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's something you should bring up with the designer. Even if they didn't build anything there, they could put landscaping that blocked your view, so. Thank you. Okay. So are we ready to move somewhere with this?
So with the discussion that we've had, I would second Sam's motion.
And the motion is to approve it with the...
With the staff recommendation.
With the staff recommendation. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. I am opposed. Okay, I think that's pretty much it. Our director's report is next.
I don't have anything for you this evening.
Nothing. Commission Communications, again, anything?
Nothing.
So you're going to advertise that this is available to the public?
The zoning code?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Yeah, well, it's going to be advertised. We will have copies in the library, City Hall, put it on the scroll. We're also going to send out an email to just about every interested resident we've ever encountered along the general plan, and zoning code update to hopefully broadcast it as wide as we can.
So these are Commissioner copies to take home?
It's on our Facebook page now, also, and was tweeted.
Oh, you've been weedy?
Larry tweeted earlier today, so...
Be careful. Did we pick a date?
I think we're still working with you to pin down a date for a special meeting.
And I did want to let everybody know I won't be here for the July meeting. I'll be out of town.
Okay. All righty, so hearing nothing else, I guess motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Excellent.